Instead of asking for answers to my questions, I wanted to read you my list of questions.
It's up to down on the agenda. Yeah, it's not public debate, but go ahead. Sure, three minutes.
Okay, okay. How much would the new post office bring into Dune City? Because that's the biggest issue. And I'm very happy to see a letter read. All of my concerns over here are about a former letter that never got read, that I've never read myself. But I'd like to know how many council members have actually read the letter? No answers needed, just think about it. How many of you have read banned letters? I call them, because they're not being spoken publicly. Shouldn't you know what's in the letter before you ban it? Assuming that you haven't read it. Who's decided who films these meetings? I find that pretty interesting to me. Because many meetings haven't been filmed. Why, I don't know. The water project. Oh, I was curious as to what the projected cost of installation and use of this proposed water system. And I came to the conclusion that we should just forget about the water system. It could be taken if it was a promise that was made years ago. So be it. It just isn't going to happen. And that should just be dropped. Okay, and I'm almost done. The water project. Did the community move the boundary for cold well brokers? And if you did move the boundary for cold well brokers, what was gained from that little event? Why wouldn't you move a boundary if it hasn't been repealed? Just so cold well brokers can make some money? So we better got something out of that. I'm not going to mention a couple of these, because someone's feelings might be hurt. Again, it's about the wrong address. There's this rule around here, or was, that says you guys could send a legal notice to damn near anybody you want, and whoever it's about doesn't... It's binding by these rules. You'd have to look a little bit more, or I would, but that's a total bullshit. And let's see, what else? Who is the Dune City wire? I need to know that. And I also want to know the details on Dune City buying that piece of sand dune out there. I'm a little suspicious about that deal. And, well, this is... That's something else. But basically, quote, "That covers my questions." And now I'll use my last seconds or two to inform you that I threatened it twice. I am going to go ahead with a lawsuit against you guys for violation of First Amendment. And any of you who have any sense could see this. I see now it's a little more open, because maybe the heat's coming on. But I'm not going to let this stop me. And I feel sorry for the mayor and the council members that weren't here when this all started. If this one letter hadn't have been read in the beginning, I would not be involved in this. But now the violation is a fit. But you look into it yourself. But I mean, I will need at some point your lawyers, because I'll be sending a letter of intent to sue.
Thank you.
My time up?
Yeah.
Well, the next time it'll be a server, okay?
All right, thanks.
But that'll be for a while, because I gotta wait to get money before I can proceed.
Okay. Do you want? I want to thank you boys for coming to the chat. All right, no problem. Next on the list is the mayor's report. I have a couple of things. I want to thank Rich Olson and Darlings and all those who participated in our April 9th meeting greet. And I have a suggestion, maybe, for our next one. Not everybody knew who everybody was. Maybe we can get shirts with them, or a hat or something. So we could point out people who weren't jats or something, or mayor or council.
For our jersey, soccer.
Something. But that was a good time. Thank you very much for doing that. That was great. Second item, Senate Bill 1576, recreational immunity was signed by the governor and is in effect. I will be out of the office for the two meetings in May, the May 1st and the May 15th. Your capable council president will be running those meetings. And what last... A week ago Monday, a couple of us met with Sherri Brubaker. She's from Val Hoyle's office, a congresswoman, House Representative, representative of Oregon 4th District. And she offered grant letters of support, if necessary, for any federal money. And we had a good discussion, so. Awesome. I think that's all I have. We're going to the community senate report?
Nothing to report on the community senate.
Okay. Water quality?
Nothing to report on water quality, still with the state.
D is road report. And I'm guessing you don't have reports right now, right? Because we have later assignments for road.
Right.
Okay. All right. And then E, permit report, is in your backup. Does anybody have any questions left for them to report? Seeing none. F, city administrator's report?
We'll get the best later, too, but I do have... Oh, I think they're all on the agenda.
Okay. All right, that takes us to new business. 9A, Oregon Water Services Meter Reading and Service Agreement. There is a proposed rate increase for next year's meter reading.
What do we pay this year? We've been paying $180 a month.
So it's a big gap.
Yeah, that's why I want to know what was, you know... Something that was not budgeted for. Of course, nothing's budgeted right now, so.
Okay. Any discussion?
Is there an alternative? Does anybody else provide the service?
They could go to the state and acquire water rights to draw out of the lake, but they would be restricted water rights. They could only use them for domestic... I mean, consumption. There's no domestic use, so they wouldn't be able to use it outside, or what are their lines, or what are their dogs, or animals, or anything. So that is an option for them, should the city's water rights go away, if we choose to have them go away.
Wait, that's item C, isn't it?
Yeah, it's...
A is the reading.
Yeah. Yeah, A is the service agreement, because I have to sign it.
But is there anybody else that can read these reports?
Well, probably.
Anybody who knows of?
No, not that I know of. These are the only ones that have been used in this area. I don't know of anybody else coming over from Eugene. But I'm sure there must be somebody out there, I just don't know. And these guys house all of our meters. So, you know, they would have to transport... We'd have to find a place to store all of the excess meters that we have for the new hookups.
So there's a cost, whether it's actual monetary or time and effort and change.
Right, the meters have been paid for. They're just being stored there, because they're the people that install them.
Yeah, gotcha. So we're already kind of invested in these guys.
Yeah.
Right.
So...
Kind of gotcha.
Yeah. Does that increase then further affect... C, right, item C. We're trying to get the full cost recovery, whatever it is. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Do you want... I guess the question is, do you stick with them, or are we go shopping?
That is the question.
Yes.
Is this an annual process? Would they increase it?
Is this a what?
Annual, so annually they go, here's our new rate to us?
They have not increased it in like four years, and so I'm kind of shocked.
I was gonna say, since we did this agreement with them, they have not reversed it.
So is it just a $20 increase, or is it a $20 end and $55 reporting?
Well, the total before was 180. Now it's 265.
65.
So $85?
Yeah.
$85 increase from...
67%.
Well, if they haven't raised it in that many years, that's...
That's pretty reasonable. Maybe just to go to your seriously costs more. Go away.
Well, and the other thing is the... The meter readings themselves, we could do them ourselves, but we would have to buy a $20,000 computer to do it. So just, you know, and hire somebody to go drive around and do it.
So $1,000 more a year.
Yeah.
It's kind of minimal in the big picture, rather than trying to switch out the logistics to that.
May I be honest?
Please?
It's time. It's time for this...
You're being accurate, right.
Yeah. It's time for the city council to decide, is the city going to be a city or not? Are you going to offer water and utilities to the people who live here? It's time. We can't avoid it anymore. We're getting so much pressure from everywhere to make a decision on this. So I would ask that you please, yes, tell me what to do in the meantime.
I guess the question is, is it's time for the city council to make a decision, but is it time for the citizens to make the determination that they're going to finally pay some taxes to make us a city?
And I don't feel like we can actually review this and agree to this yesterday without knowing that.
Well, no. I have to know.
Yeah, this you gotta do. This only affects some of the residents. These are the ones that have city water rights.
Correct.
And we have...
Yeah, there's 444 residents.
Yeah.
Houses.
So that's a bigger question. These are... These affect the ones that we read the major and report.
To the state, yeah.
So I... Short term, I don't think we have much of a choice. We've got to continue to do something.
Is this severable, so say, four months down the tracks? Can we sever this agreement?
I don't know.
Yeah. Second page termination, very bad windows.
Yeah.
I guess I should read them. As long as we sign it by certified now. So yeah, it's not forever, right? In six months, you change your mind, Gary.
I think we do it the whole, and then figure it out.
We have to continue it for now, I think.
I think so.
Until we can figure out the rest of it.
So one like to make a motion?
Yeah, move, we accept it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That's count, that carries unanimously. We'll go on to item B, Resolution 2024, authorizing city councillor Chris Clemens to take action on behalf of the city to update the Dune City website. And as part of that discussion, I wanted to make sure that minor cost things don't stall you. You know, you don't have to come back to council for, like, purchasing a web address for under $20 or something.
Right.
So I don't know what dollar amount you would expect in the current activities.
Right now, I don't foresee... This all started with the discussion that we needed to update the city's website. And as we dug into it, and I dug into it, I realized we had multiple domains with different registers, different hosting providers providing hosting services, some were just under construction for we don't know how long. So we need to consolidate all of our digital resources, while eventually getting to updating the website.
Okay.
So right now, I'm just on a fact finding mission. Once I know who controls what, and I start engaging with those people to move over the domains to common registers, the hosting services to the best deal we can find, there may be some considering costs. As you said, like, $1,000 would be more than enough. I will never... Shouldn't hit that.
Okay.
For small domain register.
All right. Issues. Then I would suggest that if we're to raise the motion to include, like, not to exceed $1,000 for this activity to... Because I think ultimately it's going to save us money on all the moving parts that are out there. So if someone decides Chris makes that motion, that would be smart.
So moved, I make motion that we accept Christopher Clemens to work on the city on behalf of Dune City to modify and update the website. And you... How was it?
Approved spending.
Approved spending to $1,000.
Okay.
And also...
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then item C, Resolution 2020...
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Are you going to be in town tomorrow?
Yeah. No. Well, early.
So I should do it over Susan's signature?
Sure.
To rewrite?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, we have a typo. The agenda says 2024 twice. That was Resolution 2023?
Actually, it should have been...
The agenda...
It should have been 24. As a typo.
No. The resolution for the website is 2023, and the next one is 2024.
Okay, well, the website's supposed to be 2024.
So that's the year it takes place, right?
Right.
Oh, series 2024.
So it was a typo, yeah.
Oh, okay, then our resolution's 2023, and that's the typo.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. Resolution two approved. And the next one is Resolution three in 2024. Okay. Setting new annual water administration fee for participants in the Dune City Shared Domestic Water Supply Program.
Preface?
Pardon me?
I didn't crunch the numbers. I had not had... I did not receive the thing from Oregon Water Services yet, and so I didn't crunch these numbers. I just knew they were enough to cover the problem we already had. So now there's even a bigger problem.
So...
I don't know.
Should this be continued? That was my comment, is I think we're premature to try to set a number tonight without knowing...
Correct.
We just approved the new fee, and then...
Okay.
So let's continue that to a later agenda.
We can't get much later. The budget is June, January, before January 30th, to the state.
June 30th?
Huh? June 30th, excuse me.
June 30th.
June 30th to the state. And so, and that's when we send out invoices.
Okay. Going to be the first meeting you make?
We just need to move it and make sure it's done, not...
But the change was pretty small, right? Because that's... They only raised it by like 60 bucks or something. Is that worth...
$85 per ounce, it's about $1,000 here.
But then that's divided by 400.
Right.
But the other was covering... This, the resolution covers the shortfall.
Right.
So it was a bigger increase to those customers that are on city water rates.
Gotcha. But even the shortfall number changed, right?
Exactly.
So you gotta get a solid number.
And I haven't seen that yet to know if... Because the number...
The other thing is that the amount we've been charging has only been charged to people at their place, their point of diversion, where the water comes out of the lake. So if it came out of the lake and got distributed to the 200 people in South, in, say, Silkus Heights subdivision, those 200 people don't pay that $100 a year fee. They only pay the amount to the company that's running the system for them. Same is true for every other drinking water system. This contemplates going to everyone who, instead of the points of diversion, to the places of use. So it would be to the 444 homes that now get water from out of Wollink Lake through our system, through the water permit. And that way, everybody is paying that gets the advantage of using the water, which has been an argument and disagreement for a very, very long time. But it's the only way we can get it close enough to where not everybody has to dish out $500 a year for water.
And it's the equitable answer. You can't all just feed off one line and call it one service.
And the... So the ones that already pay a fee, this is an increase to an existing fee, and others, it would be a random fee they've never seen, because we didn't build this.
Right.
Okay.
And just so you know, Chris, it's about $2.25 for the increase for the meter reading.
So it's a, which comes first, chicken or the egg, right? Do we approve this number, and then you plug it in?
I think we will have time. I hope that we will have time to have both. We have to publish two weeks in advance of the meeting for both the city council, well, Budget Committee and the city council, before we can have a hearing. And so it's just getting short of time, because we only have... The newspaper only publishes once a week.
Right.
So it makes it a little harder.
And that's item E. We can debate.
But yes, this can be tabled, you know, that'd be fine. And we'll just have to make sure that we work to get in that budget, though.
Right. So budget-wise, you could plug the right number in the budget, and then that would go to the next council meeting. This could be on the same council meeting that you have the hearing on the budget to say, that's the right number.
Well, we could do that, yeah.
Right?
And put them together.
Because...
That's a good idea.
You really want to have a balanced budget, and then whatever that number is, is what we plug in here. Does that make sense?
It does. I think that's the best way.
Especially since you guys may be doing this in the two meetings in May when I'm not here. I apologize in advance, but...
Hey, it's okay.
All right. All right. So if that makes sense, we'll continue this. We won't approve a number tonight until...
I just have some questions.
Until we get through the budget discussion, so we can get more of a finite number. Does that make sense? And is your question for tonight, or is it...
Well, it can wait, because I'd like to ask a few more questions in regards to our water permit and where Dune City diversion points are.
Right. Right. Thanks, I love the email, and I... We could talk for a minute.
Yeah.
I don't think I understand it well, either. Okay. Then we continue item C. We'll go on to item D, roadway area signs. There's a map in your packet. Is anyone having questions?
Only that, like, I'm on here for our gated community, we're not responsible for behind the gate, right? It's not a covered accessible road.
It's a private street.
Yeah, you're only... You're not responsible for the gated community, because it is, they take care of their property. There are other roadways in that same situation for... But that's... I've tried to put most of them in one that either I or Pam do, because we know which ones are private and which ones aren't. Sometimes you can't... When the road signs disappear, we never... Unless you know in advance, you don't know whether they're not ours.
So I have a question in regards to my Jamie. This also includes, because normally, this has been what I have been, but now am I picking up the opposite side behind Myrtlewood, Lakeshore Myrtlewood store?
Well, your whole area would run from the Fordway neighborhood all the way down to everything on... Yeah, anything in the yellow on the map.
So, but I've never driven into that... I don't look into the...
You don't have to go into, you don't have to go in to look at them.
Okay.
Those are private. When you get on private property, there's a private right.
Okay, so...
But... But there are some...
I just see this little yellow box on the opposite side of the road that I've never looked at.
It's Lightshore and Ford.
Yeah. That's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Is that an actual item? That's just a discussion item, right?
Just discussion.
Okay.
Which one?
The road.
Oh, no.
Okay, E, schedule Budget Committee meeting. The next Budget Committee will be both the final discussion and the public hearing, correct? So two weeks' notice for Budget Committee. It would be the Budget Committee, the public hearing for the budget, and then refer to City Council, which also is a public hearing.
Has to have obligation.
Okay. So you have dates in mind?
No. Are you kidding? They'd be so strong out of meditation, you want me to pick the dates? You guys have calendars? Do the math! Now, I tried to figure it out, and I decided that it would be best if you guys picked, with you being gone, because I know you're going to be gone, and I know you're going to be...
You're going to be gone, so I can do it the first of May.
The mayor's going to be gone in May.
I know.
Life goes on.
But we're... But you don't care.
We're going to carry on without him.
No, don't wait for me, you'd have a bite of me. 24, please.
24, I'm not available.
So two weeks from right now is April 30th. So that would be the soonest. That's probably two...
April 30th, or would that be May?
Yeah, April 30th, I couldn't beat nobody. So, all right, let's start with May.
Okay. The first council meeting in May is May 1st. And budget's got to be done before it goes to a city council meeting, so it would have to be May 2nd, I assume, right? Thursday.
Okay, the first should be the work session. The first council meeting would be 1, 2, 3, May 15th.
It could be that first few minutes before the work session, too, like, we didn't want them. We had budget meeting, went into the work session in April.
Do a 5:30 start on that day if we need to.
On May 1st.
A little bit earlier. I think the two that have trouble with that would be Melissa and...
I have to go all the way from Reed's part for work, so...
I'll leave that to you guys.
So...
I'll make it work if we need to be here for 3:30, I'll just make it work.
Or do one, do that 6:00 and do the work session afterwards?
Immediately after.
Yeah, I'll go inside with me. I appreciate the consideration, but I'll make it work whichever way.
Anybody else have any?
I have a comp, but I'm not going to be here on the 1st. I have a course that I'm going through, that I have to be in class at night.
Okay. So what about the 2nd? Well, I can't do the... I could do the 2nd. I could do... Is the 2nd better? I'll just come for my class.
If it's a public hearing, I can't get it published by them.
No, May 2nd. It will be the following week, a day later.
No, I mean, May 2nd. I'm... My husband had a surgery on the 23rd, so I won't be here. So I can't get it done.
Is there anybody else that can apply and can do it?
Wait, can I do it?
Sure.
You get in trouble.
Have to use a sample?
Maybe you'll come up with better numbers by then.
Oh, you mean the budget?
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 no. I think the hearing, I can do that.
So... Yeah, you have to. Yeah, you have to, the budget, the budget hearing message has to have all the numbers that it has.
Yellow.
Uh, what about the following week? Can we do it on May 8th?
Yeah, that one could do.
When, when, is that doable for everybody?
Wednesday, the eighth, in between council meetings.
And that way, we wouldn't do it till 6, we'd be.
I, I can make it work, but don't stress about.
I have, I have a class, they dropped, they changed the class date, so it's on Wednesdays, unfortunately, at 5:30 for five weeks.
Oh.
Oh, boy.
How's that?
Okay.
I sent an officer class for the Coast Guard.
Um, if we change it to a Tuesday?
That's fine.
Would that work for you?
That's correct, yes.
How about April 30th?
That's too short.
Too short to get everything published. That's why we're not doing it in April.
And the other problem is.
Jamie's house.
7th?
Well, and you would have to notice it before you've had the city council meeting, so you'd have to be committed at that council meeting the next night to be ready in two weeks, cause the notice would be the day before, it's minimum in two weeks, so.
So what about the 7th, which is a Tuesday?
The 7th doesn't give us two weeks.
That's what I mean, you'd have to notice it before you even meet, as long as you're confident, cause you're gonna be one week apart, you gotta notice it, two weeks, if that makes sense. I mean, it's doable on paper.
Well, that's what we did before, and that's why, and, yeah, so, and I can do it again, I can do both notices at once.
Right.
Okay.
And then you, you could meet the 7th for budget and immediately as following, Wednesday, would be your council meeting with the hearing for the budget.
Come back.
You're only a week apart, but they'd already be noticed.
Yep, I think we're gonna have to do it that way.
Right.
Is that okay with, the council?
The Saturday.
I'm, I'm double checking.
No.
You're okay with that? Are you okay with it? Are you okay with Tuesday? Okay, uh, Tuesday the 7th then for the budget meeting, 6:00 P.M.?
Thank you.
Yeah, at 6, 6:00 P.M.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay with you here?
Yeah. Alright, you guys good? You got all written down?
We haven't saved them all, we've only scheduled one, are we scheduling?
We only scheduled one.
But then the council meeting would be.
It's between the two council meetings, so it's three weeks in a row, so.
Yeah, then you'd have a council meeting on 15th, and if you noticed it already, you could immediately have that budget hearing at the council meeting and be done in May. And then if there's any last minute adjustments, we still have meetings in June.
Okay.
That's the hard rock dead date with the state.
Yes.
Would it, would it be at all possible to have a preliminary budget to look at on the first study session, that we could?
I will try.
We could have something, maybe.
The only thing that is going to be different will be the starting numbers and the water quality committee, the water fund. Everything else should be pretty much the same, other than starting numbers.
Great. I would, yeah, I would definitely prefer.
The starting numbers will affect whether I have enough to do contingency, and if so, how much, and unappropriated income balances and that kind of thing, to make it zero out. Or balance.
Yeah, I would definitely like to stay.
Alright, um, so you need a motion for the, or is that just a discussion for me?
No, that was just a discussion, cause I will send out all.
Okay, perfect. And item F, Eugene Cascades and Coast region.
We have been a member of Travel Lane County, which is what this is.
Right.
For many, many, many years. And they've changed how they, it used to be like 50 bucks a year kind of thing, and they're changing it, so I bring it before you to consider whether it's something you want to continue to do or not.
So the associate membership is free.
Mm-hmm.
And we can post pictures and videos and put events on Facebook page.
Yep, which, in my personal opinion, is the option you should choose.
Well, it's also appropriate, because the other about business leads and advertising, I don't think we're advertising anything, so.
I don't think we have a choice.
It really, yeah.
That's fine with me. Do you, do you need a motion if it's a zero dollar option? Or you want a motion to join as an associate level?
I just want to make sure everybody's on board with that.
Okay, uh, let's have a motion to join as the associate level. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I move to attorney at the associate level.
Thank you, anybody say it? Thanks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Matt carries. Uh, ODART meeting.
I don't understand what ODART stands for.
Follow-up, um.
I don't know what ODART stands for. Yes, they are holding and they should be in your, well, if they're not in their packet, I'd sort of, they're separately. Those are their meetings. They meet every Wednesday, which is, they know is not good for us as a city, but they also, but I have not yet had an opportunity to meet with these folks other than on the phone, and they're moving forward quite rapidly.
And we don't need to do anything, other than they're notifying us they will land it on.
Well, we need to tell them what we need them to do. It should be in accordance with our emergency operations plan, which needs to be updated, and has for several years now. But someone needs to go to those meetings, and I don't know how we're gonna do this. Unless one of the counselors comes along and says, well, I'll go, and you know what they have to say.
And the handouts, they're all virtual, right?
I think so, I think you can attend virtually.
And they're all Wednesday nights, 7:00 P.M.
Yeah, they're all Wednesday nights.
She does for council member not to show up to council.
That's awkward. And does it have to be someone from the city, or can this be?
Can be a representative, right?
That can be a representative, as a matter of fact, the guy, oh, I don't think it's, yeah, Dave Wellman, lives in Dune City, so he hasn't been real concerned about me not attending, cause he just called me and talked to him, but.
So, do you need a motion? Can we nominate Dave as our city representative on the ODART committee that was established this evening?
Well, I can do that, then he gets invited, if he's not here, we can ask him.
Tell him to run with it, call.
Why don't I ask him and then we'll come back, I'll let you know if he's willing to do that.
Then we'll table that for now, and at the rate we're going, it will already have happened by the time we.
Yeah, oh, well, they're having meetings all the time, we've missed several already.
Alright, so I'll make an open continue that to us, we'll talk to Dave. And, uh, LCOG annual invoice.
Yes, Elco gives you an option, level one or level two.
What were we last year?
Last year, we were level two and used every dime of it.
Okay. Susan and I were discussing that, so we've used 12 hours of labor. Is that who did the maps for the blocks and the addresses and that sort of thing? Okay, that's helpful, okay. So if we get our money's worth, uh, we should probably stick the level two, take, supply a little bit of information on the. Anybody want to make a motion? Is that was previously budgeted for, or?
Yeah, I had budgeted for the same amount that we had paid last year, and I think this is a little bit lower.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion to agree to continue at the level two for Elco.
Thank you, uh, we need a second.
Sir?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Alright, item I, discussion of city administrator's replacement. I believe, maybe not everybody in the audience knows, uh, Jamie Mills has given her 60-day notice almost two weeks ago, something like that. I have some notes here, so tonight, I, so when I got Jamie's notice, we have a city attorney and city county insurance services that provides human resources type consulting. So I've spent a lot of time on the phone and emailing back and forth with our attorney and Pam Bowles from CIS, and they've given me some suggestions. The 60 days is not enough time to go through job descriptions and post a job, so I'm proposing an interim step. The city administrator reports to the mayor and supports the rest of the council, so, from that perspective, and it's not defined in our city charter or anything, so Ross said make sure that the city council's involved in any final decision tonight, I'm asking for an interim step. Lila has been identified by Jamie as acting when Jamie's out of the office, and I would like it, I'd like permission to make Lila an acting city administrator as well, so we have some overlap here. Some of the duties will require that this is approved by council, and I bring the meeting minutes, like if I need to get her on the signature card at the bank and payroll, things like that, they usually ask for some sort of proof that this is approved by the council, so. So in the interim, um, we would have Lila and Jamie, and then, uh, whenever Jamie's out or at the time of her retirement date, which is about the last day of May or the first of June, depending on whether we count the weekends there, I think 60 days was literally the Monday, first Monday in June, I think it's pointless to come in for Monday, it could be the last work day in May, but, um, then at that point, we would have vacancy, and then we can get to next steps, and we'll come back to council with a, you know, more formal step. In the interim, um, I'd like to give Lila a $3 an hour raise. She's been covering some planning duties and trying to cover what she can with Jamie, and she's learning a lot, so. Let's see, let me make sure I cover all my. Oh, I have some handouts for you guys to review. This is a copy of Jamie's contract, oh, that's a set.
That's a set, okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's a contract, when her contract was approved in 2000, and was it 16, August of 16, it was acting city administrator and recorder, and then there was a subsequent revision, and it was city administrator, and the range went up slightly. So there's a copy of each, so I separated the contract and the two job descriptions. So Jamie is currently city administrator, and then we also have an acting city administrator and recorder. So that's one of the duties that has to be assigned by the city council, is recorder when you vacate the office. That one is covered by the city charter. So, um, we could probably put that in a motion tonight, that at the time of your retirement, she becomes the recorder, so we don't have two recorders at the same time, but, that way we're in a place for continuity of business and that sort of thing. We won't have to call emergency meeting or anything to take her back, and, uh, and I believe, Lila is qualified and capable. One of the questions are, HR consultant asked, she said, show Lila that job description, make sure that she is willing and able to do the duties. There are obviously some things that need some training, uh, like we have an election cycle coming up. Inconveniently, right, about the time you leave, some of us have to file for office and that sort of thing, so.
But that's easy.
Okay, that's easy, she says, cause she'll be retired.
The job.
No, it gets easier when you retire. So you become mayor. So, having said all that, does anybody have any questions for me and/or Lila?
Lila, how, how do you feel about taking on that honor?
Um, I'm finally taking it on, I, I will be asking for a lot of help, so, because there's a lot of things that she does that, you know, I'm not familiar with. I have run restaurants, I've run high volume retail places, but I've never been a part of a city before, so it's gonna be a little bit different.
Anyone else? Rich, any questions? Chris?
Yeah, we have time to, to test drive and see how it works, make sure Lila agrees after spending some more time in the seat.
Nice way to pose yourself.
Yeah, I mean, not to commit to it yet.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it either of us, right? I mean, you still have a job in planning if you hate it, and so, yeah, but it leaves us in a good spot, because there's a really short window to, I mean, not enough time to post something. And to that end, we could post a job on League of Cities for $20, uh, the CIS folks will help us with job descriptions, testing. We don't have to do all that, this is a, you know, this is our appointment, and so it's really, it's up to the mayor and council to make the selection, uh, and she will support us in that, if, she will help with, you know, descriptions, postings, testing, grading, scoring, recommendations, whatever we need, as much as we want, so, um, so when we get to that point, yeah, we'll decide.
Yeah, I'm going, it's, it's a natural option, but I don't want you to feel like you have to do this.
Right.
If you really don't want to, we will find another option, so don't feel forced.
Yeah, feel free. Thank you. Tom, any comments, questions? Susan?
No.
Okay.
Is the council able to meet behind doors to discuss this?
No.
No.
So, no, yeah, I asked the same of both, they said just ask, I mean, if it's appropriate here, ask the question, and, um, and if it, if it really should be later, like what goes in the new job description or whatever, or the ideal fit, you know, uh, or if it's just a question you can ask me, I can fly that, you know, fly, however you want to do it, or I can put you in touch with Ross if you have a burning legal question. Whatever makes sense. But yeah, the rules are very specific on what we can have an executive session about. Joe, any questions?
No.
Comments?
No.
Okay. Anything else you want to ask everyone's?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I would like, uh, I don't know what sort of a motion, a motion to authorize me to have an interim, and then I will be back in front of you in 45 days or so with a, a second step.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye, I'm nailing here.
Okay, thank you. Alright, old business, final approval of the, final approval of the Montgomery View Estate flat.
Did Jamie ask for an additional new business?
Yeah, the grants.
Grants.
Oh, where are you gonna put that?
She said anyone new business, so.
She said new business, so.
Okay, well then let's put it after the flat.
That's old business.
Oh, I got you, new business, new business, go ahead.
New business.
You were mentioning the.
Grant applications.
Oh, that's right, yeah, the grant application. Um, the two grant, there is money available, uh, to apply for something related to emergency and resilience, as in what we've been building the, the trail as it, because it is, it's an escape route for those in the Westlake area who are identified as the inundation area in the event of a tsunami. The only parts of the city that are identified as inundation is in Westlake, and this trail would provide the ability to escape Westlake, get to higher ground to get out of the tsunami. That's one advantage.
The road, the 101 is the low point there, right? That's completely underwater.
That will be completely underwater, um, as a matter of fact, it's supposed to stop at the next street. I don't believe that, I think we're gonna be underwater too, but that's just my personal opinion, don't see that big of a difference. So there's one available, that means April 30th, uh, the deadline to file is April 30th, and there's one dealing with water for, uh, the construction or feasibility studies, or engineering of, uh, water systems and, water and sewer systems, and that one, um, expires in July, but if we need to do that, I'm gonna have to get engineers involved to put, to help together, put together what we need for the, for the grant.
For the application, right, right.
And I just need authority to move forward on that, cause if you don't, then I'm not gonna waste my time to try and apply.
Okay, uh, how much is the first, the trail, or what sort of, what are the terms of that?
The emergency funds, I believe are up to 14 million, and the water, water funds are up to 60 million, something like that. And it's, you know, they're statewide, so.
That's the total available or the project limit?
No, the total available.
Okay.
They don't have a project limit on these two.
And match for those who are applying?
Yes, there would be match.
Do you know what?
Which is the project limit. Now, I don't remember, I, well, if it's federal, it's 75%, if it's state, it's 50, that's just the general rule. I mean, excuse me, the other way around, 75 for the state, we pay 25%, yeah. And 50/50 for the, 50/50 to the state, 75 feds, 25 us, there we go.
Okay, any discussion? The one is very soon, right, the first, you said the deadline's April 30th?
The first one is April 30th, yeah, it's coming up rather quickly. And there may be hoops that have to be jumped through on that one that may not get done.
Have a complete application. Usually one of the first things in a grant application is it.
But this way, if I get something in writing, uh, it will be there for future, um, administrators to go ahead and pursue. Because then we can, see, I, I couldn't get any approval, so when it went to we law, to be discussed as a group with the Westlake Emergency Operations Group, I couldn't say, well, I'd like to, yeah, I would like money, but what for? I don't know, my council, I don't, I haven't asked the council, so.
So this would help us with what you were wanting to do about the higher ground and making that location for what would be considered our evacuation point?
Yeah.
Right.
Bewalkable.
Or a ramp of some sort for us?
ADA compatible, out to, take your badge on.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
And then roads higher, whether they're subscribed or away. Joe?
I think it's good.
I'm a little concerned with our endangered species that's in that alignment, cause quite often that's part of grant application, is have you identified those sort of things, cause.
They have been identified, I have that, we've already paid for all that.
Okay.
As a city, we've already been doing that over the years. When they identify the endangered species that's over there, it cuts off an area that, that's not where we, it gets too wet anyway, that's where we weren't gonna put the.
If it's mapped well enough, you could proceed, yeah, okay, I don't mind that. Susan, any? Comment, concern?
I'm not sure we're ready for sewer and water feasibility, yet.
That's a lot to get your arms around, isn't it?
Yeah.
Short by the time.
And, um,
How about the emergency exit route?
I'm not sure, well, I'm not sure how good that's gonna be for the people in Westlake, I live in Westlake. So I, I know that they think that that will help people, I'm, I'm not really convinced of that yet, but, so I'm not real sure on that.
Okay, Tom?
I'm kind of, I'm a fence either way. It's involved, it sounds like it's.
Mm-hmm.
This is for the grant, right?
Yep, grant application, yes, always a lot of work.
I'd say go for it.
Alright, Chris?
Here.
I, I'll wait here.
Both?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah.
Alright. And we need a motion.
I make the motion to apply for the grants.
For both?
Both the grants, water and emergency and resilience grant.
Sir? Okay, and before we vote, knowing that there probably will be a cost for the second, for some engineering, we're gonna need support to sort of, you know, back of envelope, how big, that sort of. you know, back of envelope, how big, that sort of thing, okay, so.
How do we know what the cost is, man? We don't have a budget.
Exactly, that's going to.
That's going to bring it up.
Can we get a preemptive?
Well, we have a budget number for annual engineering, right? So if you're within the
The budget in your mouth, then we're fine.
Within your budget, right, because there's my, we're on the end of the fiscal year, so you have a lot of money sitting there. So given that, I mean, if it fits within your budget and they're willing to put together whatever we need for what's available, because
Well, the idea would be for us to ask to pay, for them to pay for the engineering.
But short term, like you said, you need to get, like, what are we asking for? You need some engineering, right?
Are you requesting the grant to get the engineering?
I already have the engineering for the park. I don't have engineering for water.
Right. So will there be any short-term costs to put the grant application together or just staff money?
Just staff time.
Okay, all right.
Shouldn't, I mean, I may have to consult. If they request, well, I can't.
That's why I bring it up. So if it fits within your available engineering budget, then we don't need to ask for any more, right? Then it's just authorized, the two grant applications, okay, good. That's my motion, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Unopposed.
Susan's opposed. All right, thank you. All right, that was the end of new business. Now our first old business, final approval of Montgomery View Estate map.
Mr. Montgomery, Mrs. Montgomery have been at this for at least ten years that I don't, although it's been longer than that, but the last ten years. And everything is finally done. It's all ready. They're ready to offer the lots for sale. But they have to file the last plat, the final plat. And that's why it's coming to you tonight. You need to agree to it, but the, it's already been agreed to. You just need to come look and make sure that everything that was requested is addressed. Our engineers have said that it is. I have looked at it and I, I am convinced, there we go, convinced that it's all, it's all here. And it has been like pulling my teeth to get it all done, so.
So staff recommended approval?
I certainly did, big time.
Okay.
And this doesn't pull on any resource, I mean, we talked about water and use of water, sewer resources and other areas. Does this pull any resources that?
Mr. Montgomery had reserved, has reserved water rights out of Woking for this action, and he's had them on the books for quite some time. But he also had wells on the property, and so there may be an option for people. This gives people a couple of options that they can consider. Or they could pull out a silcose and treat themselves and use silcose water, again, through the state process.
All right, and tonight's action doesn't change any of that? That's all existing?
Right, that, that's, that's up to, and it says so clearly on the map, that it is up to the individual who is purchasing the property to, to find his own, their own water source and all that stuff.
That's, that's it right there?
Yes. And this, this is the signature page, which is where you find all the conditions.
Just curious.
Chris will look for help.
You're right.
It's just this page and those are the conditions.
I'm saying.
You're saying.
Well, I saw that he did.
Well, this is part of the map. That's, this is the upper part. That's, see that right there? That's where your fist is, is Clear Lake Road. And it only has one entrance now on to Clear Lake Road, which has been approved by the county already. I don't think this will work out.
That's what I asked for. Mayor could testify to that.
Stefan?
Yes.
Do you have anything you want to add? The engineers here, if you have questions for him. Didn't recognize it last time, so I didn't.
Yeah, depends on the weather.
It's been a long, hard road to hope. The issues with regard to the flooding that we ended up in the lawsuit about have been resolved. That's Lot Nine. And mostly within the Dune City, right of way. There's like a two-foot section that isn't, that he's granted an easement for that so that we can go in there and maintain that. What it is, is a catch basin. The water comes off there. At this point, the water comes off really fast and aren't there. After construction, it probably won't, but.
So Lot Nine would be only four pad, or is that going to be open to?
It all goes into Lot Nine. It all comes in.
So then it, it's not a buildable lot then, correct?
Oh, no, it would still be buildable. It's just the last back half. It's, it's, and then there's a drop off. Okay, and so it's just in there, and right now, this, the, all the drainage has been working fine and doing great. No complaints, so.
But adding houses could potentially increase that, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, well, I believe that, I can't remember, aren't the houses supposed to, well, you don't have any control, we have control over the houses. We can require that they put in, you know, catchment drains.
Required drains.
From the roof, yeah.
Yes, drains, roof fringes.
So the post-construction can't have more runoff than pre-construction?
Right.
So you're going to have HOAs, it's going to be a gaming community?
Oh, probably.
Might as well sign while you're here.
Oh, we signed?
Well, you have to sign. If, yeah.
Yeah, it's a plan, it's approved. We should sign it out. All right, any other questions? Look good, Counselor Clements?
Sure.
All right.
Industry opinion looks good.
Okay, I think I would suggest a motion that follows staff recommendation for approval, since there's some history here that not everyone's familiar with. Would someone like to sow motion?
We make a motion that we approve the plat as designed?
All right, who'd like to say? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, you each will do, you will, each of you will need to sign.
Okay.
And it has to dry between your signatures or it will smear.
I get first one and it's a lot of weight.
All right.
Correct, who runs down?
I can't run.
Okay.
I'm not going to jump over this either.
Next item is Resolution Number Four in 2024, authorizing city administrator to sign audit documents for 2023, 2024. The city council will pull. That's where that was inserted, right, on the right?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yep, so So within the audit, they gave us a report back.
Uh huh.
And we know they're converting from accrual to cash, that's all been solved, but when they gave us their audit response, that had different account balances. And so where's the reconciliation with, like, they came up with different starting numbers than we had? And there's got to be some sort of documentation that says, because you got to correct the book, if someone's got to correct QBO, so they give you usually a list of journal entries to make sure the audit number matches your actual number. Have we seen that yet? Because you can't sign.
I gave it to you two weeks ago or something.
No, during the budget meeting, we didn't have it. That was part of the problem. We didn't have.
Well, then I gave it to you when you were in my office that day.
That, yeah, that, the audit report, we got the same day. That was stamped that day. It was.
No, we got the report.
Yes, but there was corrections to the.
He just wants all the journal entries.
What's the list of what?
Because they got to be able to say, if we're this far off, this is why, this is how you account for the difference.
Because the biggest concern was that water.
Right, right, what was the right number?
Right.
Right, so we didn't, so I haven't seen the actual journal entries that tell us what to do.
I'll have to find them.
So I say we can't, or I would vote to approve this without signing anything, without seeing the journal entries, so we all know.
I thought I'd given everything to you guys. I really did. So, okay, that's fine. We'll put it on.
Is there a deadline for that?
Yes.
What's the deadline?
It has to be done by June. It just has to, the audit has to be done. We are, we already got a eight letter from the state that we haven't turned it in yet. So we just have to get it done as, as possible. There was a, it's June first, you have to have the new, new budget in place by June first. Excuse me, July first, end of June.
Okay, so you need an approved audit.
The audit is already late. The audit was due in February.
That's my question. Okay, audit is due in February, okay.
So if we wait and if she gives them to us the first of the work session or the eighth, then we're
Right, that's correct.
We're good.
All right. So continue it to one of those two meetings and get it done then, okay. Item C, Oregon dude's triathlon, any update? Anybody here in the news?
I have her word.
Okay. D is the franchise agreement? Any new, anything to report there?
It's in your package? No, no, it's not.
Is that it?
No, that's a collection.
No, I don't think there's anything to report.
Uh, no, we're, oh, yes, thank you for bringing it up. We put in our agreement that we wanted a minimum of five hundred dollars a month. And they came back and said, that's too much. How do you feel? About two fifty, and I have to bring that to you. So a minimum in the, and you had it from the last meeting. You have a copy of it, but it says five hundred, and they wanted two fifty.
From our work session or?
Hyatt.
No, what about?
For me or March?
It was a previous council meeting.
Yeah, March.
What's the, what's the average? I mean, let's say.
Well, right now, they have no customers out here because they have no services. And so what they're saying is they don't want to have to pay until they have a certain number of hookups.
Do they have an anticipation on when they would be constructing out here?
I'm sure they must. I mean, they, they can't, they can't, they're ready to do it, but they can't do it because they don't have a new agreement with us. And so, but they knew that it would take, they could still put the lines in, whether they have customers or not, but to pay for it, they want to be able to, to have the money to be able to pay for it and not pay the minimum to us at five hundred. Like it said, they can get by with two fifty, but they can't get by with five hundred, at least for the first six months.
So is there a trigger when that would go up?
Well, after six months, we put in, we'd say whatever we want in there. But yeah, as soon as they get a certain number, in the past, in some of the examples I've seen that they've, they've written, they said as soon as we get X number of people.
Right, that's what you say, like, once you sign fifty customers on or something.
Right, and that's kind of where they're at, but that's not how this one was written. It was written by our attorney who said, no, we want a minimum every month, a flat fee every month, and set it at five hundred. And that's when they came back and said they wanted two fifty for at least six months, so they can get it built up.
So what happens if we say no five hundred? They just make a decision that come out here or not, or?
Oh, I don't know. I think they're going to come out here no matter what, but, but I, I don't know that for sure.
Because I don't like waiting for like fifty, and that's allowing a business to make profit if off of us.
If they're acceptable, like, six months, no matter what, it goes up to five hundred, that seems reasonable, because it'll take a while to get all the infrastructure in place. They may not have many customers.
They're like, they give them a runway of six months, but it's a calendar, six months, you got zero customers, or a thousand.
Right, I'd be fine with that. It's also easy to manage, right? I mean, when we start counting customers, it ends up very intensive for city staff as well to try to verify.
Right, and, and for those who may not be aware, that when they, we enter into a franchise agreement with them, they don't have to pay for the permits for this, when they come in.
Right, they just pay their flat.
It's already part of the franchise fee, so.
Well, that's the other. What would the permits look like if we said, the fee's zero, and you got to pull a permit for all this stuff? Would we be in better shape or worse shape, in your opinion?
I think they'd be in worse shape, because, is Pam here? Yeah, roadway permit.
If?
What are they, run at six, well, I know the driveway is four hundred alone.
Yeah.
A driveway permit's four hundred, so when they're working in the roadway.
Or would they say?
It's one fiber line and it's only one permit to raise up and down all the roads? They don't need, if they have a franchise, they don't need a permit at all.
No, I know, but.
No, 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 they have, each, each section that they would have to do would have to be
Okay.
A separate permit. Each roadway, I guess, would be the best way to do it.
Well, what do you guys think?
I'm not real comfortable in funding their learning curve, they're necessarily upfront.
I don't think it's a learning curve, it's just getting infrastructure in the ground. They're going to spend a million dollars before they get to fifty customers. So I see their trucks out there. I mean, they're in Florence right now. They're working their way through the area, so I think they're serious. And it's only a matter of time before you have a choice for, for internet, and that usually helps with price as well, like for the customer, when you have choices.
They're only asking for half the rate for the first six months, so, and after that, then it's full rate. So.
That seems reasonable.
And then is it negotiable beyond that first year, or is it just?
Well, yeah, it's, it's a certain set time that it's the lower amount, and then it goes to the full percentage that were allowed by law.
If they end up with ninety percent of the business here, do you, is that five hundred negotiable in year five or anything? Like the fridge?
No, no, no.
But when you.
No, no, I didn't read it. Let's see.
Can we see the agreement?
I thought we had it in the past, but.
I can't, I don't, I'd have to know which, which medium is that in order to decipher it.
It's been some time back, and I remember this
It kicked around a couple times.
Six, eight months ago.
Yeah.
Four, yeah, last year in July.
That's a collection.
Oh, that's a collection agreement, sorry, wrong one. I have to agree now.
I think they want more money.
No, that's a, they have to see it, not me.
Yeah, most of the franchise.
It's been a while since I read it.
Because they have customers, unless they're bought out, and then, but you can renegotiate at some degree for.
Well, usually we can renegotiate our franchise every five years, if we want to, as a city.
What does the city pay for internet at this building?
Why do we pay for it at this building? I don't know, it's combined with everything else.
We always put that in a franchise agreement. City didn't pay.
Well, that's charter, that's, that's different. The internet is different, unless we change.
Could be. Yeah, that's, I presume, right, once your infrastructure's in the ground. So are they only selling TV?
Who?
Hyatt.
I don't know what Hyatt does, other than
I'm sure there are data
Six G, yeah.
So you can subscribe to movies, voiceover, internet, whatever it wants.
I think it's internet. I think it's computer.
Okay. That would be my suggestion, is throw that in there.
I know somebody has an internet service through them, so I think it includes internet.
Yeah.
When you look them up, it just says internet.
Yeah, broadband business.
Didn't need a fiber.
You can subscribe to anything.
Everything's going internet anymore anyway. TV's going to be gone before long.
Yeah. So, I mean, I've been through these a couple times with some big companies, and it's, I suggest you simplify, like, if they're giving you two fifty before they have a single customer, I'd take it, and at the end of six months, it goes five hundred, that's, that's easy to manage.
Well, that's what I'm thinking too, Jeff, yeah.
Yeah, when you start doing the five percent of gross revenues, they're going to say, oh, we got two customers, here's your thirty-nine cents a month.
Right. And how can we do two fifty to start, just not five hundred from the get-go?
They counter the two fifty from the start because they don't have a customer yet.
Good, we can counter at four ninety-five then. Well, no, I just, and this is from a business guy, we're allowing a business to come in and tell us how they can generate a bunch of money, but they'll pay us X, and I get what they're asking for. We offer our franchisees a six-month ramp, but this is a business coming in. We have leverage on them, and we should say it's five hundred, or don't do it there. Just my opinion.
I don't open anything.
I don't see the ramp. I don't see the ramp why it helps us.
Do we get back next month?
It's not.
Well, I'd be, I'd be in question if we can get a total, if we did not do a franchise, as to what the, the benefit would be if we did have them, like you were saying, paid by driveway or road or?
They'd pay by permit, but then you wouldn't get any revenue.
Because it all but on counting on the bills.
Right.
It's the long term. You should get 10 permits or 50 permits in the next one year, and then you get nothing until the rest of your life.
That's what you would be 15 permits, so.
Yeah. So that's pretty typical in franchise agreement. This is a long-term relationship. Serving customers and being in your road, maintaining systems forever versus the short-term issuance of cut a piece of paper.
Laughing because probably nobody remembers Falcon Cable, but they were one of the original franchisees in Dune City.
So we need a motion.
I'd make a motion that we charge them, we respond with it's 500 straight up front.
Any second?
Please. They offer a lot of IT services. It could be free hosting.
That's why I'm serious about ask for free for city hall and then.
Well, 500 and free internet, so.
But also 250 for six months and free internet, because that ultimately could be worth a lot more to us. Lot of local governments get that. And it starts out, you know, it's, it's just the price of monthly cable, but it ends up there's other services you can do.
Right.
Could they host our stuff, Chris?
That's what I'm saying.
I was going to say.
They have other services that we could go into just, not just for internet. But they were not even here yet, though. So how long is that going to be? A year, two years, three years? It might be easier than.
Probably the next year, yeah.
Do they have a proposed time of when they plan on being here?
I don't know. Our attorneys have been negotiating this deal, so I'm not familiar with all of the details.
I.
But I know that they're doing it, they're.
Yeah, I see them all over the place. I think they're going to be here sooner than later.
I think they got a whole lot of them.
I know, just an estimated timeframe that when they went up the north port, it, it didn't take them very long to get up there and get things accomplished. So I'm not saying that that's the way it's going to happen out here. I'm just saying that it, they got through that in a fairly quick manner, so. I don't know.
So the motion died for a while.
Yeah. I'll restate it.
Want to try slightly different motion?
Say, say we do.
Standing permit 500 is obey.
475.
Because essentially, if they're moving that quickly, they could be here in a month. And we're going to give them five months at a reduced rate for a reason.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you how long it would take them to get this far.
No. I would love to add, I don't know if it's too late to say.
Well, they're already on 101.
No, I mean, add hosting and internet to city hall once they get here.
It's not too late to do whatever you want to. We're still in negotiation.
Block that, I, you know, then say, well, give you the 250, but you need to add city hall once you get to this part of town. And, because long term, that would be great to have a partner that.
They offer a lot of IT services, not just internet. They're not just an ISP. They offer a lot of enterprise IT services.
So wouldn't it be better to say free services to city hall? So we're not limited? Or whatever Chris thinks the others are.
Make a list, I don't know.
We could just counter with, we would like some IT services. What will you include? See what they come back with versus us trying to.
Yeah, they'll come out with a question.
They're given like all services. I'll be like, how do we deal with this? We want unlimited everything.
You want one terabyte of server storage and, I mean, you come up with whatever you need.
That's, that's what happened with charter. It's because it started out stopping cable. So all they were was cable. And then it, you know, morphed into the phone and the internet. And so now the bill is split out with we get free telephone, but we don't get free internet. And in here, just the box to plug in the TV, just the cord to plug in the TV is, is a dollar 95 a month. And we got every.
Yeah. So, yeah, let's counter with that, 250. And we wanted to host the city's website and provide IT or something. And I'll ask for some specifics, but that, you know, give us a minute to come up with a list and.
Our IT infrastructure is not intense.
Right.
We have various basic websites, some email services. They have, they offer Microsoft 365 cloud services.
Roundup.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is that enough to counter? So is that a, is that a motion?
I don't think it's a motion, right? Because we don't even know.
Or.
It's a discussion.
Just instruct Jamie to tell the attorney to count.
So we'll continue that, yeah. You, you counter and then.
Because then we'll see the, the, the draw a line, sand out some line.
Perfect.
Also, I can bet.
No, you don't need to, that. I left it at discussion. Okay. Item E, the collection agreement. So is this now approved by, reviewed by our attorney?
It's been reviewed by your attorney.
Very good.
A change had, was not made. All the changes were made, but one.
I saw that, a location for county, right?
Yeah, we want to make sure that it stays in Lane County and not Washington County.
Okay. So I think this is ready to go in place. I mean, we've.
I think so.
Reviewed it and discussed it, and so I'd like to approve the agreement.
I make the motion to approve the agreement with Western Agency for selections.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It is 7/37, and we're getting the short-term round ordinance. Have you had time to?
No, I haven't. So there's nothing really present. I, I got, I'm almost, I'm down to the last three pages.
Okay, perfect. So the next work session, the next normally scheduled work session is the 1st of May. Susan will be, will be prepared. So I presume by then you'll be able to get through those last three pages, send them out to everybody. We'll all compare to our notes. And if I get it before I go on vacation, I'll send Susan my notes. And we'll be prepared to review that at the first meeting in May. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I won't be here for that one.
Well, we have enough to vote on.